Could have been. Right. To council.
Yes, I did. I did.
So when I find some spare time, I'll.
Amanda's iPhone.
Amanda and Sam are both on.
Yeah, and you see.
They're both online.
Yep.
Okay, council, it is six P M. On Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll call this meeting, regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Council or manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor, just a clarification that the, there will be an executive session. Item eleven, it says as needed, but it will be a executive session for legal.
Yeah, and we will be joined by council.
We'll be joined by council, correct?
Okay, gotcha. So noted, anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to item three, visitors and communications. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Yes?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ellen, I was saying yes to Bern and then, then I'll get right to you. Sorry.
It was actually. Sandra Perry.
What's that?
It's Sandra Perry. Not Ellen. She was just waving her actual hand.
Oh, I see.
I'm glad.
It's also me as well, but I have my yellow hand up.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Bernadette Rose, and I live here in Berry City, and I've done so for quite a long time. I want to tell you that on Thursday night, Brenda Waterhouse, who is the principal of the Berry City Elementary Middle School, is having a wonderful, family-oriented program, and she's calling it crock pot night. And she and the staff will be providing samples of several crock pot meals, followed by a demo by Principal Waters House herself. And there are going to be some door prizes, and she told me one is a regular, regular, ready-to-plug-in crock pot dinner. And that's at five thirty to seven o'clock. It's family-friendly, and the community is welcome to attend.
And I'm sorry, that's where, Bern?
At the elementary school.
At the elementary school.
Our Berry City school.
In the cafeteria or in the?
It's in the cafeteria.
Fantastic.
So, yeah, it sounds like fun, and I really appreciated that every month she's been having some kind of a family fun event. Berry Town School is doing similar, just, I don't know how those are set up, but Brenda was at our safety meeting last night. And I think comments about that should wait for Nicholas's presentation later.
Can you comment on his, which presentation?
On the safety.
Oh, I would say, well, we're actually, we actually have a follow-up under item E.
Right, that's what I mean. Say that for then.
Yeah, you can certainly have the opportunity to comment then.
Great.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, but you were, who was it next?
Sandra, Sandra Perry was waving her hand.
Okay, Sandra, why don't we, why don't we go with you, and then Ellen, you'll be next. Oh, you gotta, we have to unmute you.
Yes, you should be able to.
There, can you hear me?
Yep, you're set.
Okay. Yes, I'm here at home because my husband and I are both recovering from COVID, so there's no sense spreading that around. But we felt it's important to address the council another time about our whole stop sign request that we made for Prospect Berlin Street intersection. I just let you know that I know there's a presentation by VHB later in the agenda, and I'll be listening for that as well. I did have a good forty-minute conversation with them after our last meeting that I was there for. And I just have some additional stuff that I'd like to present to the council at this time, and then I'll listen to her presentation too. So, since the last meeting that I was there for, I'm just gonna read what I've written just to, for time's sake. And then if anyone has any questions about what I've said, I certainly will take them. But regarding what actually brought us to the city council with Prospect Berlin Street and Westwood Parkway intersection, it is the many crashes that we have witnessed that causes us concern and that it is not safe to get through that intersection. A stop sign in every direction would make it even safer. People would need to slow down and stop before going through an area that seems to be a problem. And the fact remains that the number of crashes we are getting through reports apparently cannot be relied upon. The first report we got was one in the last several years. The second report we got from VHB was four crashes in thirty-six months. I requested a listing of the number of accidents at this intersection in the last three years from Police Chief Vale. In that report, there was an accident that was listed as non-reportable. I know for a fact this should have been listed as reportable. We do not know if this is one of the four included in the VHB's report. Maybe VHB will enlighten us about that. If that crash is not included in the VHB report, the addition of that crash would make it five in thirty-six months. Only one shy of the six required to warrant an always-stop sign at this intersection according to the MUTCD. If that crash was not reported, are there more examples of that happening? It brings forth the fact that the total number of crashes is still questionable. It seems not all that reliable when the numbers don't match up. Something is not right. And now to the secondary issue found in this report from the city police department. It was found that twenty different stops were actually made for speeding at or near this intersection. Twenty. Some of them reported as going forty to fifty-plus miles an hour. And it indicated only three tickets were written. Two of the three were written for lesser speeds than the actual violation. The rest were given just verbal warnings and/or note, and no, or no indication was noted. Something needs to happen. So in conclusion, as we stated in the beginning of this whole process, as residents of our neighborhood, we have witnessed many crashes at this intersection, certainly more than the one in the last several years that was indicated by the first report. Some of them could have been much worse, some of them can be worse in the future if these occurrences continue. Please consider our request for more stop signs, make it safer before life-threatening accidents occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, thank you for being so patient.
For sure. Yep, Ellen Kay, Berry City. I'm here, and council, I believe you are in receipt of this letter that I'm about to read. I am submitting my resignation from the Berry J I B, that is Justice Equity Diversity Belonging Inclusion and Belonging Committee. For the past four and a half years, it has been my honor to do the work that I believe every municipality should undertake. It was my fervent hope that our work would result in an integration of equity practices into all work of the city through its policies, hiring practices, and procedures. The success of the J I B committee will be realized when there is no longer a need for this committee because the awareness of inequity and the vigilant work of inclusion will have permeated all of the work of our city. Because we are far from that goal, the committee needs to continue its work until, I'm sorry about that, until the city commits to the time, resources, and buy-in required to make Berry accessible, inclusive, and willing to take down the barriers to participation in civic life, such as, and not limited to, racism, gender, and sexuality discrimination, poverty, and sexism. The end result of dismantling those barriers at the city level will be inclusion and ultimately belonging. I implore the elected leaders of Berry City to do a better job of supporting the work of the J I B committee by demonstrating an acknowledgement of these historical barriers and by understanding how they harm our community as a whole, and by committing to consult with the committee when making policy, such as public safety policy, listening to the recommendations of the committee, and working together to implement them. I hope in the future that applicants to the committee will be required to affirm their agreement with the goals of this committee in order to be appointed. It has been an obstacle to our work to have a member who is not in alignment with these goals and actively works to undermine them by denying the existence of racism, working against women's rights to make decisions about their own bodies, and publicly advocating for mass deportation of immigrants, which is in direct opposition to the goals of inclusion and belonging. The diversity of ideas about how we accomplish our goals makes for better ideas. But there is no place on a committee dedicated to inclusion and belonging for opposition to those very goals. And I hope that the committee in its new phase will not continue to suffer the harassment, belittling, targeting, and trolling that most of us on the committee have endured since its beginnings. Please protect and support residents who step up for volunteer positions that make our community better. I will support the work of the committee going forward and urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger, did you ginger cloud? Hi.
Hi, thank you so much. I just really appreciate everyone being here and the ability to have civic engagement. And I know sometimes it's frustrating and unpleasant, and we're all here, which is amazing. And people that can't be here, we're really here to advocate for them as well. Right, all of us. Last week, at the city council meeting, reviewed some community-based surveys that looked at accessing local needs and priorities. And during this discussion, there was a comment that really stood out to me, and it was a reflection on this one survey that, where respondents felt that the D E I objectives were not important funding priorities. And that really settled pretty uncomfortably for me, that that was a part of a survey. I really think the choice to single out D E I as a low priority in this context prompted reflections for me on whether such a question should really be appropriate in a community survey. You know, D E I initiatives are designed to challenge these entrenched systems of inequality within the white supremacist patriarchal system that have long dominated our societal structures. And these initiatives seek to uplift marginalized voices, foster inclusion, and dismantle systemic barriers. So given these missions, I really question if these types of questions should be included in our community survey. Because it's really hard to imagine that a majority of our voters or residents might want to advocate for those that they might not feel invested in lifting up. And so I just want to really encourage us to think about as we move forward if these kind of programs really should be determined by a majority vote or voice in our community. By the nature, these programs really strive to create spaces where all people are valued and seen and empowered. Yet if they're subject to a majority approval in a culture shaped by systemic inequalities, we really risk perpetrating harm and silencing the voices of our most vulnerable community members. So I really hope that as we think about these community surveys, we can really look at whose comfort are we prioritizing in framing the survey questions and who might be excluded or harmed by the questions we ask. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else under visitors and communication, council, we'll move on to item four, the consent agenda. We are approving the minutes of January seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Do you, I didn't, I didn't, do you have any licenses? I didn't see any.
No.
Okay, there are no licenses to approve. We'll be ratifying council's one-seven-twenty-five designation of clerk and managers. The authorized representatives for the bond requisition will be accepting the resignation of counselor now representative, Waziz Ak, effective eleven fifty-nine P M. On twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Will be approving the legal services policy that was in your packet and has been in your packet. And do you have any contracts, sir?
I do not.
And there are no contracts for the manager to author, to execute, so motion would be in order. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. We're gonna give it to Council Augustine. Sorry, sport. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. That was unanimous, so I don't need the roll call. Council under four A will be approving the city warrants of the week of one-eight-twenty-five. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
You were late on that one, council. We'll give it to Council Shandell. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. And I'm sorry, council, I should have mentioned right, oh, did you abstain?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry. Council, I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that councilors Guston and Stockwell are joining us online.
I don't see Council Stockwell.
I don't see her either.
She was there.
Oh, I see, she was, two seconds ago.
Middle left.
Oh.
Thank you, I see it, I'm sorry.
There you are.
Sorry for the confusion. Yes, thank you.
No worries.
For the record, I'm here.
Yes, thank you, council.
Noted. City, Ms. City Clerk and Treasurer, do you have a report for us?
Just a few words. We have been updating the website with the election information, the Ward Two Caucus information, which is scheduled for Thursday, February thirteenth. The details on the process, including who may participate, how the nominations are presented, and how the voting takes place. All that information can be found in detail on our website. If you are not sure which ward you are in, there is also a map that has been posted within that same area. There are currently one thousand seven hundred fourteen registered voters in the Ward Two area. Secondly, the clerk's office has also posted some information in regards to the B U S S D election scheduled for March fourth. You may view current board members and the positions they hold, as well as some generalized school budget information on that area. And updates for both events will be continuous as they come in. And if you have any additional questions, feel free to email the clerk's office or give us a call.
Dave, yes?
So for the Ward Two Caucus, because there's same-day voting, can people show up that day and register to be a Ward Two Caucus participator voter?
I will have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
That's, that's a great question.
That's a good question.
I mean, you can show up on voting day, and you can register. You can go to the Secretary of State's page, register, and then go vote.
I would assume you could.
Want to start a pool? I would say yes.
I would say yes, but I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, but it's always better. But if, if there's anyone out there who plans on attending and voting in the Ward Two Caucus, if you're not currently a registered voter, it makes it much easier on the clerk if you can register in advance, and it's really easy to register on the Secretary of State's webpage or here at City Hall. So that would be appreciated. Any other questions for the clerk and treasurer? I'm stalling for you, buddy.
Thank you. Looking for a pack chair.
Nope, not a, have you found him?
We'll see here soon enough.
Okay, not a problem. Well, it's time. The managers report.
Thank you, mayor. Just a, two, three quick updates for council. Well, one of them's not so quick. So we kicked off the due diligence for Prospect Heights last week. This was, DeWolf is our lead partner on this, and the council received our contract. And I think, I think most everyone's aware, but the wetland study cannot begin until May. So there's gonna be a little bit of time between when it starts and when we get some results back. But had a really positive first meeting, and DeWolf is, is ready to get going on this. And just a reminder again that the council did extend the, the timeline for the option on the property until October of two thousand twenty-five to account for the delay in getting this started and for, of course, the, the wetland study, which can't be done throughout the year. The, we will be, we have scheduled the repaving of North Main and Blackwell, which was the area that was pretty heavily damaged by the sewer collapse. So I know residents have been hanging tough. That was a real, it's been a real rough stretch of road. But that is scheduled, it'll be prep on Tuesday and repaving on Wednesday. So please be aware of the closures and, and traffic diversions that will occur because of that. It's a great reason to sign up for regroup, so you can get your updates that way. We are holding strong at seven hundred ninety-nine registered participants, so almost at our next milestone. But that is, as I mentioned, Tuesday prep, Wednesday repaving, so just be alert. We'll, we'll, we'll send out notices on all our channels closer to the date. And then this one'll take a little bit longer, council, but I thought it might be good to give you a preview. I did have an opportunity to get, to get started on the budget survey. So I wanted to, you know, I, I will send this to the council to get some, some feedback on the content before we, we release it. But I thought it would be helpful to get some, to get some eyes on it here. As we talked through, there wasn't really a, there's not a real big science to it. These, these surveys are pretty, pretty standard, and we, we saw surveys from several communities that by and large tracked similar issues. So this is kind of a, don't let the, this is a scan, so don't let that sort of scare you here. The, the online version will look much nicer than this. We started with, I'm sorry, I'm trying to futz here with the computer so I can scroll. So we have a couple of, of questions at the top, which are demographic-based. You know, one of them was really to, you know, tell us what describes your relationship to the city. And so here's a chance for, you know, if, if non-residents do respond, and they're honest about the, the response, then we'll get some, some feedback from both residents and non-residents, and we know who's telling us what. We have, we asked people to identify their ward. I, I did clean up this, this is a pretty long link, I did clean it up a little bit, so it won't be so, so overwhelming. People will be able to copy and paste that into a browser if they don't know what ward they live in. Age, how long you've lived here. We asked about housing status and employment status, as well as income. So those questions are really just to, you know, for us to understand who's, who's telling us what as they're getting into the survey. We also take the opportunity to ask people about how they do get their news, because I think we probably all love to hear how we can reach people better. So if they're responding to the survey, I think it's a good way to, to find out how normally people do connect with the city. So we ask about their overall quantity and quality of communication, as well as how people get their news and alerts with those various options listed there. We, we, then we get into sort of the budget side of it. And we, you know, some high-level questions about, you know, let's find out how residents think of services overall. Some philosophical questions, are people, you know, interested in maintaining or increasing, knowing that it increases taxes? Or do people just want to see, you know, affordability issues and taxes cut? So that's just sort of a global question that was, I thought was helpful from one of the other surveys we had looked at.
I'll ask a quick one.
Sure, of course.
Cause, can there be like a middle spot where they're okay with how things are? And I see increase or decrease.
So I think the, it's maintain or increase, because the reality is if we maintain, that the costs are gonna go up anyway, just because they do it.
Yeah, I mean, I know that level funding is impossible because things go up.
If we do level funding, it, it really means a decrease in services, yeah.
But to say maintain or increase kind of sounds like it's two options.
Yeah, we can split that up.
Sorry, I'm just.
No, that's fine. And then, let's see, then there's some just broader questions about services generally, just how residents rate specific service areas of the city. And these are pretty broad categories, needs improvement, good or excellent. And, you know, we, we could add, you know, just to, you know, there are questions about the categories here. I mean, the, one of the reasons I'm trying to keep the choices generally limited is because the data that gets pumped out of this then needs to be sorted. So I think the simpler we can keep it, the easier it'll be to sort of sort data and hopefully still get some meaningful responses. So we split up just the general city services, you know, the, the big categories of what the city pays for. You know, we ask people about those same services, if there should be an increase maintaining or decrease as well. So these, these categories are the same across both of these questions. This is a question that sort of on the staff level we were interested in, I had alluded to when the council discussed this last week, which is that really a lot of our budget is fixed, right? And so when we do, when we do get into the budget conversations, we're really playing around a lot of the margins. So we thought it would be helpful to have a question like this, which asks people to really prioritize the, the things that we do not really have to pay for, but do choose to pay for. So of those things that are not mandatory, which do people like and prioritize and would not want to see prioritized? And these are, you know, these are hard. I had some people take the quiz in the office just to see how it worked, and they told me it was difficult, and it should be. Like, these aren't, these shouldn't be easy questions to answer, and people should sort of be struggling with their top three if they're doing this correctly. And then on the, on the flip side, of those same services that are not mandatory, which are the top three that people really don't care much about? And again, those, those should be tough things to, to sort of sort out. Talk a little bit about sort of our accumulated capital needs, so a little bit more on the capital side, where people want to see the big investments going in. So we have the, the big categories here, and then, you know, level of importance of, that, that people might feel about those categories. And then just a catch-all question here at the bottom, which is, if we do look to increase revenue to maintain services, you know, which sources do they most support? And that's property taxes, fees, and fines, or frankly, they don't want any new revenue. So we have one last, we have one open-ended box at the bottom. You know, I, I've looked at some of the survey, I think the Montpelier one has some positive things. I also found it a little bit overwhelming with the, sort of the, the level of the, the questions and the written feedback. So we try to structure it so. So we try to structure it so that the feedback's coming sort of in these form questions. But we gave one box at the end for anyone who has anything they'd like to add to sort of put it all, put it all in one place, right? So it's a little bit easier to, to track. So, you know, this is, in terms of the, the, sort of the guiding questions we discussed, this doesn't have address, but it does try to get at it with that first question. I know, Mayor, you had mentioned something along those lines of identifying or making sure that we're not getting multiple responses. So that, there is one way to do that. There is a way in this, in the software we're using to limit the responses to one response per IP address. I have not activated that because I know that there's people who may be responding from a same machine or same home. And so that may limit their ability to do so. But that's something we could also, we could also try. You know, we could end up sorting these by IP address if we think that people are gaming it. I, I hope people don't think they need to game a community budget survey, but I understand that it's a concern, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't be crazy about the IP address thing because if there are folks who want to complete the survey online and they do it, million of them do it at the library, for example.
Exactly, correct.
Or at the high school or wherever. I mean, you know, that's why I suggested the address because it wouldn't be something, obviously, that we...
Yeah.
But if, you know, if there's no practical way to do it, there's no...
We certainly can, I mean, this, you know, we certainly can do the address. I have no problem adding it. We would, we can make it a required field. This information goes into, you know, the city has an account. This is the software we use for other, other features in the city. For example, the complaint forum, Tess used it for the North End survey last year. So the people who have access to this account are myself and Chris, right? And then we hand out access to people who, you know, who use it with our permission. But we can lock sort of what people are seeing data-wise. So I have no problem adding that. It's, I had the same concern with, I can add the address. I had the same concern with the IP address. I think that would be certainly impractical. But what I'll do, council, you know, this is...
I mean, I really don't like the idea of IP address because there are a lot of folks who, you know, might complete the survey at the library and that would lock them right out.
Completely agree.
Karen may want to complete the survey at home and, you know, or there could be a few Berry City residents who work in the same office. You're going to share that IP address and depending on whether you do it at home. So I think, I think the IP address, I think the IP address is a definite no for me.
I, I agree. We can do home address if people are comfortable. I mean, it's...
Well, no one's going to access it. We're not going to, you know, it's a, it's a budget survey. We're not going to show up at your door saying, why did you say that? We're asking for your feedback, whether it's good or bad.
We can add that field. And then what I'll do is I'll, I'll send it to, to the council so I can get, you know, wording suggestions if, if anything is unclear or... And then I, I would, you know, with the council's blessing, would like to get something out if, if we're going to talk about top-line budget stuff on February 11th, I, you know, with council's blessing, I'd like to get something out after people have had a chance to look at it for like wording and tone and things like that.
How long you need, folks? Forty-eight? Forty-eight would do it for you? Yes. Is there a character limit on the last question, open-ended box?
I don't believe, I can check. I, I don't know if Tess, if you remember when you did it. I don't think I set one.
I'd be, I'd appreciate it if we don't have a limit.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Amy Gelford, did you have a question?
Yeah, one other piece of the budget that we end up voting on is all the various nonprofits and agencies that have line items on there. When I first moved to the city, we had them as individual line items. And I know it can make the ballot kind of long. And there's been, it's been kind of collapsed in recent years. And I know most of the time every one of them gets approved and that was part of the logic maybe for combining them. But I also remember when, for instance, like the Montpelier Senior Center was on there and it actually got voted down because people voted for the Berry one, but not the Montpelier one. With all the budget pressures we're going to have, I'd, I'd like to see those separated. I actually do look at the annual report and figure out who I'm going to vote for. And sometimes I'm really impressed by certain organizations and wish we could give them more. And then others, I kind of say, I don't understand what they're spending our money on. And I also can't file for some of them. I don't know how many municipalities are kicking into them. So I'm a fan of splitting up those individual line items by making the ballot longer. I don't know if there's any place to address that in the survey or even just to have a simple question, asking people, do you want those split up or do you just like, yeah, no question? So I'm just...
Yeah, I, I think, Amy, I'm not fully prepared to answer your suggestion because I know there's a city council policy about how those get placed on the ballot. So I think we'd have to, not that, I think there's time to change it if, if there was a will to. So I, I don't know if, absent a change to that policy, which, with, whether those could be separated out on the ballot. I don't know if there's value in having them separated because they would be presented to the voters as a whole anyway. I do have to check. I know that when I was preparing the survey, there is a sort of a, a data field limit. So I forget how many there are of the voter approved, but I might be, I may have to sacrifice other fields to, to make it all one survey. So I know that's not a super helpful answer, but that's, that's all I got at the moment.
Did you want to respond to that, Mr. Booton? Oh, all right, okay, she did. I didn't know if you were responding to that. Ginger, do you have something?
That was really kind. I, I guess I have a couple just thoughts put out there. One is the address. I do think that could be a barrier for people for different reasons. So I'm just wondering, some people had a great idea around neighborhoods or wards and, or is there like a dummy address that could be used for people that maybe don't feel comfortable giving out their address? I just, I just think people shouldn't be excluded. I don't know if it's a required field, but I think we could get a little more creative there to figure out how to encourage people to participate. And then I'm also wondering if there's any way we, we could actually survey some of our more vulnerable populations in this community besides just the library? What kind of outreach maybe could happen through some of our other committees? Or just to make sure that we get a rounded perspective on the city and what the needs are of, of the city?
Great suggestions. You know, provided they, I mean, anyone could help someone complete the survey. If we didn't use, which we're not going to use, the IP restriction, you know, anywhere, Rainbow Bridge, you know, Turning Point, anywhere, anywhere there's a computer, you know, we could, we could certainly send them notice that we have this, we have this survey and we'd like as many residents or non-resident, you know, we'd like as many people as possible to complete it. Tess?
When I did the, the surveys for the... Anyway, what was I saying?
When you did the survey for the...
No, when we did it, we did do print surveys, understanding that not everybody has a computer. So we could get some out and get them around. And I, I'd volunteer to enter them into the, the program if, if somebody wanted me to do that.
Sure, thank you. Representative Booton?
So I want to follow up on what Amy Gelford said. I think it would be good to have that on the survey as well to let people make a determination of whether or not they want them broken up. I haven't met a single person that enjoys the fact that it's a one and all. And now that we're moving from the, the March election to the May election, the, the size of the ballot, probably not that big of a deal because the, the whole issue with, with that was to make sure that it didn't get two ballots. And with, with the, the change, we probably won't. I will say it's probably one of the disappointments that I regret voting for. But I, I think it would be nice to have, unless you just do it. But I think it would be nice to, to see what people think about splitting that up.
Understood.
My opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Guston?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo, I think, what Ginger's very astute concerns about people who don't feel comfortable sharing an address. And there could be language in the survey that's something like, if you don't feel comfortable sharing your address or for any reason, use the address of the Aldrich Library or something like that. And it is as follows. I don't think that we are going to have so many people trying to, as you suggested, Mayor, game a, a, a community budget survey that, that we should absolutely demand you can't fill out the survey unless you share a residential address. I think there are quite a lot of folks whose opinion would be deeply valuable on city issues who may not feel comfortable sharing that. So if there could be some kind of language out in that question, I think that would make it more accessible.
Thank you. Ellen Kay?
Yeah, I'm, I may have missed it. How do we make sure it's Berry City people, Berry City residents voting on this?
I, I think I covered at the beginning, which is we don't. The first question provides people the opportunity to identify themselves as a resident, a property owner, business owner, or somebody who works in the city, or somebody who recreates, visits the city, uses services in the...
Got it. Thank you. Sorry, messed up.
No problem. Counselor Spalding?
So I'm wondering if I understand the concern about asking for an address. I wonder if we can put name as optional because if someone has some really great feedback, we might want to talk to them. And if they're fine with putting their name in, if we make it optional, then let's just ask them for it. I'm also wondering if we're asking them if they're registered to vote in the city because that would determine whether they live here and are voters here.
Do that last one again?
Registered to vote.
Oh, if they're registered to vote in the city. Yeah, I mean, we could say, I live here and I'm registered to vote or I live here and I'm not registered to vote. I mean, we could.
If someone says that they are a business owner and they live in Berry Town, they're not registered to vote in Berry City, but that still gives us information.
Right.
So I'm just saying, let's...
So if we want to compare, you know, that was a discussion we had when we first started talking about this. If we, if we wanted to see, okay, how does everyone feel about a certain issue? And, you know, the data leads you one way. And then we say, okay, but how do the people who actually vote feel about, you know, feel about that issue? Or how do we, how do the people who actually live here, whether they're a property owner or, or they weren't, it doesn't matter. They live here, you know, you're, so we could sort of filter out different data points.
Yeah.
So presumably if they're, yeah, I'm assuming if they live here that, I mean, but that's not always an accurate assumption. They could be 14 years old and choosing to fill out a budget survey, which, hey, is fine by me. Yeah, something to think about.
Yeah, and, and I, I think these are all great suggestions. I want to come back to something I mentioned to Amy, which is that I was at the field limit when I added the last question. So this is a, it's a, it's a tool we have. I mean, I suppose we could look at other tools that might be able to do more, but that, that's just a concern that if, I think these are all terrific suggestions. I just don't know if I can physically fit them in within what's here. I may have to, you know, combine some things or shorten some options, things like that. I just want people to be cognizant of that, that it's, it's also a, a software issue.
Well, my hope is that we'll get so many people responding legitimately that next year we actually have to go to a different platform because we say, look, this is really helpful, good information, and we need to expand the questions that we're asking or ask them more often. Counselor Guston?
Sure, I, I think Counselor Spalding's point is a good one. If I may suggest a sort of neater space-saving solution to that, which is if we make that question identifying what role you play in the life of Berry City resident, business owner, et cetera, not a radio button, but a checkbox button so that they can check multiple options underneath that and make one of the options they can check, registered voter. So you could be a red, just resident, registered voter and own property. You know, and own a business in Berry City. You could be all of those things. And then you could still filter out for which audiences you were looking for, for answered the survey, but you could get some nuance in that. I hope everyone checks the recreates in Berry City option, option if they live here. But that might provide a neater way to do that.
Good idea. Joel and Mulvaney?
Good evening. I'm a Berry City resident. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. I just want to point out that, I want to point out the difference between this type of survey and a survey that collects data. This should not be considered a scientific data survey. This is what's called kind of a satisfaction survey. It's, it's considered anecdotal when it comes to comparing it to hard scientific data. So I just wanted to point that out. So people don't use this in the same way that they would use that other type of data. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for the manager council? Good work. Thank you. Counsel under New Business, 8A, we have a traffic calming presentation from VHB. And Mayor Jen Conley is here. She's on Zoom and she will be guiding this conversation. I will bring up the PowerPoint. Jen, welcome.
Thank you so much.
One second, Jen. I'll be right. I'll get this up here in just a second. Oops, I need to go to the screen first.
Well, I'll just take a minute and introduce myself. Jen Conley, I am the Director of Transportation for VHB. We are a 100-person engineering, planning and scientist firm in Vermont. And, well, our firm's much bigger than that, but our presence in Vermont is 100 people. And as such, I've been asked to look at a few different things for the city. And one of those is the always stop that was referenced earlier in the meeting. But that led to a question about just traffic calming in general. And so what I'm here to do is to give a brief overview of some of the things we think about with traffic calming, some of the things we evaluate and why, and then, you know, entertain a little bit of conversation about that information afterwards. So with that intro, is, is it okay if I proceed?
Please, please do.
Great. So if you go to the next slide, what this slide does is it, it introduces just the concepts of traffic calming. I don't think it's shocking to anyone, the slide and the next slide, both, that really the purpose of traffic calming is to improve safety, enhance quality of life, encourage people to get out to bike and walk, try to reduce cut-through traffic. And of course, it has some environmental benefits. And if you move on to the next slide, in most cases, the need is really safety concerns that is reducing speeding and accidents and especially in areas with high transition speeds, which I think we do have in, in one of the specific locations you're asking me to look at now. And it's, you know, mitigating that impact of that fast traffic on bicycles and pedestrians and also finally to reflect the needs raised by local residents and stakeholders, which I know we also have in this case and has already been shared on this meeting. So you can go on to the next slide. There's a number of toolboxes that are available to me as the practitioner. Some of them are, are shown here. This is sources of data from FHWA, which really outlines a number of different traffic calming techniques. And on the next page, you will see a, an e-primer from FHWA, but even what E-Trans puts out for a toolbox for us to consider different types of traffic calming. And I'm not going to mention everyone because a lot I don't think would be appropriate in the context that we're talking about here specifically. But there, there are a number of tools is more what I want to call attention to. And the next slide really gets into the challenges of finding the balance because there are so many things that you have to look at when you think about traffic calming. There's what's appropriate to get you the results you're looking for, but it's really balancing things like improvements to safety with the convenience of what's going to happen with traffic flow. It's looking at the costs and the benefits associated with the different things you can put in. For example, Aroundabout is an example of a traffic calming device, but that is cost prohibitive to most communities and most locations. There's also aesthetics, whether this is going to look nice. This becomes part of a neighborhood, for example. There's maintenance concerns, which we all know with a number of the things that I will be mentioning for specific techniques. Being able to maintain and plow snow is a real factor in Vermont that it may not be in other communities with these devices. And then there's always the question of that impact on emergency services. We want to make sure, obviously, although we're slowing traffic down, that we're not actually interfering with response time at all. So in general, traffic calming devices fall in really two categories. And on the next slide, I have here, there's the vertical solution. And this is something we're all very familiar with. We've seen it, say, for example, in parking lots is some kind of a speed hump, a speed bump, a raised crossing, using all different types of things to basically slow the driver down by changing what's happening to them vertically. And that can even be, I do include here, and you'll see in the bottom left, was just a sketch of a raised median treatment because I, I do put curbing in some ways, kind of falls in both categories. It creates kind of a, a vertical element that makes me feel like I need to slow down. On the next slide is more, I'm so sorry, is some of the... On the next slide is more, I'm so sorry, is some of the horizontal solutions. And that can be, again, curbing, but sometimes it's on-street parking, it's sidewalks. It's things like in the upper right, intentional tree planting, or in the lower left, sometimes having fencing at the edges of the road to create different pinch points and other reasons to make you want to slow down. Now, I'm going to pause here for a minute to see if, in general, you have any questions, because I can get into more process if you'd like, or talk to you a little bit about different techniques. Before, I just raise a few factors about the intersection I know the council would like some specific information on.
Amy? No, I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, excellent. So to specifically get at the location on the next slide that was talked about, which was Prospect, Westwood in Berlin. At that location, just to wrap up a few things, a few aspects of this intersection. As I said, in my mind, it falls in a type of area that is very common for people to ask about traffic calming, which is kind of a transition area. It's when you're going from an area that has more of a free-flow speed and is more, is less dense, and as you're transitioning then into an area that you're going to start to have houses closer to the road and neighbors, and people might be out walking or biking or other things that you would need, you know, to transition to a slower speed form. Now, in this location, we do not have current proven speed data, which is unfortunate. It hasn't been collected at this location lately, which is obviously before we start trying to influence speed, we do like to have a good idea of what speed is. But of some of the examples I raised above, I just wanted to show you, on the right, I kind of just enlarged and made the sides of the, the bridge or the, you know, the, over the culvert on Prospect Street. That is already a pretty traffic calm spot, because it does feel a little constrained as you travel there, so acts as a little bit of a traffic calming feature. Whereas on the left side, more what I'm highlighting is the giant curb radius, and it's a little difficult to see, but you can see I did in green show where I would like those lawns to pull out to, so that people can take those turns at very high speeds. And so my guess is that as a result, they're doing things like cutting the corner a little bit in that area. And so you see at this intersection, the, the geometrics are very different from the left to the right-hand side, because Prospect is a little more constrained to the east versus to the west. And also, especially turning down onto, to Westwood, you could, I'm sure, come around that corner at quite a rate of speed. But even the same thing on Berlin, and Berlin is where we have a sight distance constraint due to vegetation. And as a result, if people that are on Prospect cut that corner, you could be coming down Berlin and not see that vehicle taking that turn. Now, we haven't dug in particularly deep to look at all of the different options at this location, but I just kind of wanted to raise some of the items that I mentioned above in context with this intersection, just to kind of start that conversation and to see if the council had any specific questions to ask about at this time.
Amy? No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, someone in the audience did have a question. Bern Rose?
Just a comment. That there's a, one of those signs that catch your speed and tell you to slow down or what your speed is. That's not working again today. It's frequently not working, or in the afternoon with the sun shining on it, you can't read it.
Thank you. Counselor Guston? Yes, Counselor Guston?
Um, thank you. Thank, this was a great presentation. I had some conversations with folks who are knowledgeable about transportation policy and traffic calming about this issue in the last week or two. And a lot of what you're, you're talking about lines up with their understanding of this specific intersection. And thank you, Bern, for mentioning the, the speed sign, because one of the things that someone had said to me is the speed sign is too far up Prospect Street. It should be closer to when you need to start to force people to, to slow down, not right at the, the city limits. I'm curious if you looked at that spot for any kind of narrowing of the road, any of the kind of curb or, or other solutions before getting to that intersection? Because as you mentioned, there are some constraints immediately after the intersection. It's, it's much more open and clear before the intersection, which is probably part of what is causing the, the challenges in that spot. So I'm curious if you looked at anything above the intersection besides increasing that, the sharpness of that corner to sort of force people to slow down and take that turn?
Yeah, the increasing the, the sharpness of the corners is just what I initially thought when we started to look at this intersection. I was struck by it immediately, because the radius are so large, and that is not typically in this type of an environment which you would want. We haven't made any recommendations. I haven't investigated very much, but you do raise a good point. Usually, if we were to do a raised, say, a raised median, for example, we would do it closer to the intersection, assuming this would also be where pedestrians might be crossing, and so wanting to really influence the car's behavior right at the intersection. But that is something we can certainly look at and consider. What, where do we want that, like I said, transition area to begin? And, and try to properly locate whatever that, that, you know, whatever that device is. And as I said, really, we can look at whether it's, you know, a raised median or something that constrains from the outside, or whether it's a vertical feature. It's just a matter of really speaking about it, especially with city staff, about maintenance and about what the options are. You know, some of these things, especially a raised solution, maintenance is a concern, but it also does create noise for neighbors. And so locating these, sometimes you don't want to be too close to a home. You know, there's a number of different considerations. So we can certainly, you know, take that into consideration, and especially your suggestion that by the time they get here, we do want them to already be going slower.
Amy Galford?
Is there anything that you would think through as far as the slopes approaching that intersection? Some of them are coming uphill, some are going downhill, and some are relatively flat?
Yes. Yes and no. The challenge with really changing the grade is, the unfortunate thing is you have to chase it back so far, and it gets extremely expensive, which makes a traffic calming project of that type less palatable. So one of the things I think in a case like this we would be looking at is what could be implemented for a reasonable amount of money quickly, so that the project doesn't die on the vine, quite frankly. Usually, if there is something that's significantly steep, so steep that I'm really worried that people will be sliding out into the intersection or not stopping if there is a conflict or that sort of thing, that is when you might consider a grade change. But I don't know that in this particular case that it would meet that level.
Just jump right in, Counselor.
I, I will keep you here all night talking about this, if you let me jump right. I don't know, I geek out on this. Um, I, so the specific sort of conversation we've been having that leads, has led us up to, to this point is about the question of stop signs, making this a four-way stop with two stops on either side of Westwood and Berlin on, on Prospect Street. And I know that your firm did the, did the sort of study per MUTCD, but I wonder if you could speak specifically to the use of traffic, excuse me, of stop signs as a traffic calming technique generally, and what benefits or drawbacks you see to them in, in various intersections?
So I would say, I, I'm going to answer the last question first. In my mind, the worst thing we can do is put stop signs where they will lead to non-compliance. And so I think that's a lot of what the warrants are around, is does this make sense because of the different volumes, because of the sightlines, because of all of these different criteria, that a stop sign will be there and people will obey that stop sign? And what we don't want to do is install stop signs at a place that over time, people will learn, well, unless a cop is sitting there, I don't really have to stop, there's not enough cross tra, you know, or that sort of thing. So that's my biggest fear with installing stop signs at places that they don't meet the warrants. I have seen, obviously, stop signs used as traffic calming devices. I think it's more to eliminate cut-through traffic, quite frankly, and to try to get people out on, from a local road, out onto an arterial instead. And I think for, when there is a parallel diversion route, it is a good technique if you want to reduce traffic on a local road. On a road like this, I'm not sure. I think I typically find, like, yes, for that moment, someone might stop, but they're going to very quickly accelerate back up to speed. And I don't think you get necessarily the sustained benefit of the understanding that this is a road that feels like I need to drive it at a slower speed.
Thank you. And in terms of the, can I keep going? Sorry. I'm not kidding. In terms of the, the suggestions that you made around improving those corners, cutting them more deeply into the road, possibly narrowing the road a little bit to, to change the feel of that road. And I know, like, all things dependent, et cetera, but are those expensive fixes? Are those fixes that could be tested out temporarily? What's, what's the scope we're looking at?
Well, I, I love, no matter what it is we're suggesting, if it's a change that we're anticipating changes in behavior, I do love a pilot program, so I can geek out with you about that. But obviously, the least expensive, you know, intervention that we can do, and we can always do things in phases, is with striping, to really better define with wide pavement markings where you should be driving, where the path should be. And if nothing else, it's attention-getting. It doesn't mean everyone will comply with it the same way they would if we put a curb or removed asphalt. But there, that is always a low-cost solution, is to use striping to, to try to get to the, the goal that we're trying to get to, and/or do a pilot over a couple of days using, you know, road crew cones or, you know, something else to, to that effect, to just try to get that behavior that we're looking for. It's also really helpful if you end up having folks who are opposed to such a change to be able to prove that, no, the landscaper with his trailer can make that movement, even if we do implement this change later. So those kinds of things are really helpful.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? I only have one burning question, so where do we go from here? Yes?
Kind of curious about, you know, talk about a pilot program, Jen. And I know that we kind of talked about a pilot program and how that would be absolutely horrible to put a stop sign there and to take it away. So I'm just curious, you know, what your thoughts on a pilot program would look like, and when that might be able to be implemented if it was a decision that we'd like to make.
So it would really depend on what you folks as a city ended up deciding to go with. Again, I would come up with some recommendations, and you could decide what you wanted to implement. And then really, it would be as quickly as you could get the signs or lines or whatever features ready with that plan for that pilot situation. One of the things is we would want to do advanced signage with any change. I mean, especially if you are thinking about installing an always stop here or anywhere, you definitely want to warn people on what they drive every day as a through street, that there is a change coming, because otherwise, you will end up with an issue with non-compliance, because people kind of process it away, because they, they drive it every day. They might not even notice it in the beginning. So really, thinking about that public outreach campaign, if something were going to change, if there were going to be construction in the road, you warn about that. If there were going to be new traffic calming devices, if there were going to be an always stop, no matter what it is, is figuring out how to, you know, how to warn for that, to make sure that, that notice is out for everyone. And then at that point, especially if it's a pilot situation, chances are it could be implemented very easily and for as long of a period that you, again, just communicate that to the public, so that it's very clear it's going out for this period. Most of these things we don't do in the winter, just because of, you know, maintenance concerns. But, you know, it could be, you know, a summer implementation while the, the city decides if they want to go forward with a more permanent installation.
Thank you. Joanne Reynolds? Joanne? Oh, there you go.
Sorry, I unmuted myself. Thank you. I'm just curious how this got to this point with this committee. I sat on the Transportation Advisory Committee, TPW Committee, for two years. And for three consecutive years, I've been working through, well, twice, for two years I worked through that committee, and one year I came directly to Nicholas and my city councilman to try to get some attention on Hill Street. I've been a resident of Hill Street for 10 years, and we continuously struggle with speeding on our 44-foot-wide street, particularly the area between Nelson and Lincoln House, which is extremely problematic. And last year, my next-door neighbor had a car slam into the side of her house, and a letter was sent out to a number of you on this committee, talking about that with some recommended solutions. And we've had no response whatsoever. TPW fell apart. And I know they reconstituted and beginning to meet again, but my question is very simple. How do we get your attention on this? And how do we work through, when I was on TAC originally, the first year, we developed a list of, I think it was eight streets in the city that have volumes of traffic that are extremely high and have had resident complaints about speeding. And I would really like to see those things get addressed. I would love for you to do a pilot. I would love for you to come up with some low-cost solutions and just get it done. And let's, you know, make a plan and do it over the next 10 years. Let's not wait until somebody dies. Thank you.
Thank you. So Nicholas, path forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra, are you, were you, did you want to speak? Sandra? Sandy?
Yep.
There you go.
Yes. Yeah, I, I too am surprised we've gotten to this point when, it's been since six months now that we've been talking about all of this. And it does, it does seem that it has turned into a citywide issue when we, as residents of this neighborhood, brought it forth to the committee. It now seems to be an example of what's going to happen for any residents who request such, such items as this. And I really don't know if it's setting a precedent that that's what's going to have to happen anytime somebody requests something. I certainly hope not. I hope that, you know, we don't spend $2,500-plus every time a request is made to do some kind of study when it, it seems like such a simple thing to some of us to just add a couple of stop signs. But it, it has gotten to this point, and, and now it is, it does need addressing. And just a couple of other things to mention with Jen, when she and I had our conversation, I don't know if she had been informed that we were hoping to get some kind of information about the impact of the Prospect Heights project. I don't know if that's been taken into account in, in any of her reporting. And also, Jen, I think when we spoke, you actually looked at something and determined that that fence along the property line on the corner of Berlin and Prospect, that fence is actually in the right-of-way and probably should not be there at all. So I wonder if, I mean, that is, that is a, an area that does blind the people trying to cross that intersection. So those are the two things that, the Prospect Heights project, and then that fence is in the actual right-of-way that should not be there. So she and I had talked about that. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I can, I can just quickly respond to that, just so that the council is aware. I just looked on the Vermont Parcel Viewer, which is fairly accurate, but it's not perfect. So I would suggest that someone from the city take, do take a look at that. And it's less the fence and more the vegetation that's growing up along the fence that really ends up impeding your sightline in that area. And, you know, we do mention vegetation, obviously, in, in our report when we evaluated the always stop.
Counselor Guston?
There we go, sorry. Um, sort of, I'd just like to follow up on, on Joanne's point that Hill Street has, has some bad speeding as well. I've been working with residents in Ward Two on Merchant Street who have speeding complaints and safety complaints as well in their neighborhood. So this is, this is and has been for some time, a citywide challenge around speeding, around safety in streets. And as Joanne had suggested, the, the Transportation Committee is back online and, and back and able to start working through citywide recommendations again. So as a suggestion of, of moving forward, I would love to see VHB's specific recommendations scoped out for this intersection. They've done some initial ones already. Would love to see those scoped out. And I would love to see the Transportation Committee start to, to more deeply engage with residents across the city who have similar concerns in their own neighborhood. I'm sort of viewing this as, as the way we can start this. I'm sort of viewing this as, as the way we can start this conversation. Um, we're starting with this intersection, but we can start a conversation citywide and start to think about solutions citywide for calming traffic, for slowing traffic and for making our streets safer. Um, and we can, we can start here, but I would like to see it continue in other neighborhoods where other residents have concerns.
Thank you. Counselor Stockwell?
We are considering how to look at the citywide problem of speeding, which is a universal complaint. And, you know, I just see people zipping up Berlin Street and they're, they're blowing through that stop sign there, which I think there's a stop sign. It doesn't always work and the speed limits are not being enforced. And I don't know if they can be enforced, but they need to be enforced. So for the transportation committee, Transportation Public Works, I think the first thing that we want, like everyone lives in their part of the city where they look at people speeding and they look at the accidents and they say, how can we change this? But we don't have an overview that says, here's a hotspot, here's a hotspot, here's a hotspot. So there's some data-driven ability to look at what we should tackle first. And, um, and again, the expense, now how do we look at, okay, we want the city to be a common place across the board. How can we afford that? What can we put together? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question?
Of course.
Um, so I'm assuming that the presentation that we just received from VHB is specific to the Prospect Street and Westwood Parkway Berlin Street. Is that correct?
No.
Yes.
Well, yes, but from my point, it's a general introduction to traffic calming measures that could be incorporated anywhere with the exception of the couple of things I mentioned on that last slide.
Okay. And when we asked the manager and Department of Public Works to contract with VHB to, to do this, did we ask them for a study about what to do at this particular intersection?
Yes.
Okay.
Then they're working on that, yeah.
Okay. So we don't have that yet.
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand where we are in the process.
Correct, yeah.
So my next question is, assuming after we get that report, we can make some decisions, can we then take those same ideas and apply them to these other places? Or do we have to contract with you and have you look at every single intersection because every intersection is different? Or every street is different to determine what would be the best calming measure, measures for those particular streets?
Um, there would be like in this case, the, the, um, turning radius is something specific to this location that I hope you don't have happening at all of your locations. But for the most part, most of the things that were on the two slides that just list a variety of the different horizontal and vertical options, they are a toolbox that's open to you regardless of what location you're looking at.
So our Department of Public Works could take some of those things and implement a pilot at the bottom of Camp and Hill Street, the intersection of Camp and Hill Street, for example, based on the recommendations that you've given us in this report?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McKenzie?
Sorry, I was trying to get the, uh, video there, but as chair of the newly reconstituted, uh, Transportation and Public Works Committee, um, I just wanted to say that as, as people are bringing up issues in different, uh, sections of the city, by all means, if you, if you have, uh, issues that you would like the Transportation and Public Works Committee to weigh in on or address or study or whatever, by all means, uh, feel free to contact me. Your email is on the website. Uh, we'd be happy to, um, take these under consideration and provide, do, do what the committee is, is intended to do, uh, provide advice back to, uh, the manager, uh, Director of Public Works, uh, City Council. So, um, feel free to weigh in. Uh, I, in, in answer to, I think it was Sonya question, Sonya's question, do you have to do a study every time a, uh, issue comes up? I don't think so. I think, I think a lot of these things can be resolved at the local level with maybe, maybe with committee input, but certainly at the, uh, public works level, uh, there, there may be isolated, uh, situations, maybe complicated, complicated circumstances that require the expertise of a consultant, but, um, I certainly don't think a study needs to be done every time there's a traffic issue that comes up.
Thank you. Okay. So we, does everyone understand where we're going from here? And what we're doing? There will be a specific recommendation to the council. I assume that will be, you know, do you, do you have any idea when that might be?
Um, I should have it to you, um, within the next two weeks for certain, perhaps in the next week, but I don't want to commit to that.
Okay. Well, interestingly, so I don't know that we necessarily need, uh, counsel is your choice. I don't think that we need to necessarily have Jen present that, you know, formally as she is, as she did this evening. This is something specific we asked her for. I think she could present that to Brian and Brian could present it to the council. You all okay, okay with that? In two weeks from now, uh, we're meeting, so the timing actually works, uh, perfectly. So if we have that, if we have that packet for the, uh, for that date, that would, that would be great.
Great.
Super. Counsel, uh, anything else, counsel, on this issue? No? Okay. Then we will move on to item eight B on the agenda. This is to accept the charge for the Berry City Police Advisory Committee. Mr. Nelson?
Chief Vale? Evening.
Chief, you may want to swap out a chair. Otherwise you're going to look like, like.
Bob's more important than me.
Yeah, but you may, you may flip over backwards, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, uh, we revamped, uh, the committee mission, if you will, or charge, maybe, whatever you want to call it. And, uh, I think you have a copy of it in your packet. I don't know if there's questions, comments?
Uh, no.
Original mission was so old that it said, uh, police, hmm, it was the civilian advisory board. That's how old it was. So it was time for us to, to update it. That was the original.
You know, this, I mean, from my point of view, this is one of the committees I really don't worry. You don't keep me up at night because you just do good work. You know, the policies that have been coming at the council have been thorough. Chief, thank you. They've been well thought out. Uh, so, I mean, honestly, uh, with regard to this committee, whatever you'd like to do, sure. Okay. Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Comments?
Great work.
You must, Bob, go ahead.
Uh, just a few things. Um, you know, appreciation for Chief Vale, his, the policies, as you alluded to, um, he will tell you, uh, that I definitely read every word because the only thing that I could ever find that went against statute or wasn't written correctly were grammatical errors occasionally. I'd find a comma or something similar. Um, so well-written, well-thought-out and, uh, they protect both the residents and the officers that, um, protect us, uh, in the city. And so, and I, I say that every, I, I always say to Nicholas with my emails, you, you're sick of hearing this, but here's what it is. And the, the committee themselves have done great work. They come prepared, they ask good questions. Uh, we moved through the meeting pretty quickly. Um, I would express appreciation for former counselor Wazak for his participation and for being such a good conduit to you folks, uh, for us. Uh, I have certainly enjoyed having him and I look forward to working, uh, with, uh, Counselor Guston as well. Um, I can tell you that we're coming, the chief says anyway, I'm not sure I believe him, but he says that we're coming to the end of the policies. Um, and I will tell you that we are also coming towards the end of my term as chair. I will not be seeking, I will ask to be released, um, from my service.
You didn't arrest you, Bob. But there's still time.
There is. Um, so in May, um, I will be looking, I don't know, I think I'm in the middle of a term, so I'll ask to, to have my term be given to somebody else. Um, it was my goal to see this through, as some of you who've been around a while know that, uh, this started with Tim and we went through a bunch of policies and the state made some changes which forced us to completely throw everything out. And then Brad came on board and we've, uh, we've moved along since then. Um, I think we may have one or two surprises for you before I go, but, uh, it's, it's been enjoyable.
And, and you, like I said, you've done, you've done great work, as have you, chief. We, we just appreciate it.
It's a good team.
So counsel questions? Counselor Spalding?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for having very clear, a very clear mission, um, the expectations of the committee. I think that's really helpful when people say they want to be on the committee, um, because a lot of people don't necessarily understand what that's going to entail. So this is very helpful and I think it's, um, then that puts it on us to make sure that we are appointing people who agree to follow the expectations that you have laid out. So I, thank you for that.
Ditto. Good.
I would, uh, move to accept the charge of the Police Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Is there a second, please? It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, counsel? Hearing, hearing done? All those in favor of the motion presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. It is unanimous. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you again.
And while you didn't ask my opinion, I will look forward to potentially seeing those buildings across the street gone at some point.
Well, can't, can't make promises.
I just said I look forward to that.
There you go. Counsel, word item eight C on the agenda. This is the state legislative update with Representatives Booton and Wazak.
Hello, counsel. Mr. Mayor, Manager, Mountain City Clerk.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing well.
Good. Um, so I don't know if there, we can just recap what we've been in session for four days.
Floor is yours.
Do we want to chop our heads off?
No. No, no. I'm having a great time. Um, so I've been appointed to the Committee on Ways and Means, uh, which as you all know, controls, uh, tax code and importantly, education funding. Um, and it's been, you know, clear that there is, I've worked previously in the education fund and there is an awareness in the building that Berry is more or less ground zero for why our current system of funding education is not working. Um, so the first few days have just been very basic, property tax 101, ed finance 101, et cetera. A lot of pomp and circumstance. We received the governor's inaugural address and all of the other statewide were inaugurated as well. Um, some issues that are pertinent to the city of Berry, uh, I have been named one of the co-chairs of the Legislative Flood Caucus and we are in the process of building the 2025 Flood Omnibus Bill, uh, which will, similarly to the 2024 Flood Omnibus Bill, will be a, um, aggregate of all of the statewide needs, uh, in terms of flood response from the state. And, uh, also as of today, the second co-chair was named, Representative Gina Galfetti from Berry Town is the other co-chair. Um, and we felt it was very important for this caucus to have bipartisan leadership because this is about as nonpartisan as it gets in Montpelier, um, and looking forward to working with Rep. Galfetti, um, on that bill as well. Uh, and jumping off of Bob's comments, actually working with Representative Monique Priestley of Bradford on a bill that will give municipalities more mechanisms to deal with vacant and blighted buildings. Uh, Representative Priestley is from, like I said, Bradford and she is the executive director of the Space on Main, which is a formerly old blighted building that has become the heart of Bradford's downtown. It's a community center, it's a coworking space. Um, and so we're starting to work together on building a bill that will give the city, um, more tools to address broken and blighted buildings. Um, those are the top line things and I'll let Representative Booton talk more about this, but we also presented, uh, the Berry City Charter Changes was the first bill that was heard in the Government Operations Committee, this biennium. So we already presented on that, I believe on Friday that was.
Yep. Um, so I've been appointed to the Commerce and Economic Development Committee, which does hear, uh, issues on TIF, which obviously we are very interested in. Um, I have submitted the, uh, TIF extension bill, um, for, to be created by Legislative Council. I've also submitted a project-specific TIF, uh, bill for Legislative Council to work up. And I also submitted the, um, the pilot, uh, plan that, uh, Mayor Lozon had spoken about a couple of weeks ago, a couple, about a month or two ago. Um, still waiting for that. All of that will come before the Commerce and Economic Development Committee, which is pretty awesome. Uh, like Teddy said, we did, um, testify for the charter changes and we've been pretty adamant about pushing that forward as quick as possible. Um, they were a little concerned about charter changes not passing during the same legislative time, um, or legislative session, even though they don't ever pass in the same legislative session anyway. So.
Town Meeting Day is pushed until May and the voters approve a charter change, that charter change, when the vote happens in March, in theory, the charter change could be taken up in the months of April and May while the legislature is still in session. Um, and they were concerned that, you know, if we move Town Meeting Day to May and a charter change passes, then that's not able to be heard until the following January. Um, but it's a decision for the community to make. Um, and so they asked for some follow-up information from Manager Starla Castro, which I believe has happened.
Yeah. And I, and I can share, I mean, the, the main, you know, issue is that the charter doesn't really contain a lot of operational functions, really structural, uh, the structure of the government. So, um, from an operational standpoint, um, I think we would, we would be able to, to survive, right? We've survived with these, the charter as is for so long, right? I, I think that another six months, the way it's written, I think wouldn't be a challenge.
And, and it's been that way before.
Correct.
You know, we, we went from May to March and as I recall, when that happened, like no one said, oh, yay, the legislature, you know, so I, I really don't think it's ever been a real consideration and the world didn't end when, when it was in May before.
And I don't think it's going to be an actual obstacle to passing the bill. It was just a topic of conversation that came up.
And it's, it was just texting Teddy about the, um, more power to regulate downtown vacant buildings. Um, there was actually a bill that I just signed off on today as well, um, that does give more power to, to the municipalities to regulate those buildings. Um, yeah, and I know that I've been working with Legislative Council on the drug issues. Um, uh, that's tough. It's really tough. Um, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping to see some legislation from, from, that's really going to address this, cause I don't know if I'm going to be able to figure that one out. Cause it's, it's pretty tough. I mean, going to the, the, uh, what was that? Hmm? Oh. No, you're good. Oh, okay. Um, yeah, it's, that's going to be a tough, uh, bill to, to see go through. Do we have something else?
Uh, those, no, those are my top line updates, I think, too, on the, from a ways and, from my committee's perspective, um, that's where we have the power to really move money around. And I think what we heard last night is reflective of the fact that we need people to feel safe in the community and we also know we're not going to arrest our way out of this. Um, it's going to take significant investment in substance use, uh, treatment. It's going to take significant investment in housing. It's going to take significant investment, uh, in expanding our shelter capacity. Uh, and that's where I look to make the most amount of difference rather than on the punitive end of the criminal justice system.
So I'll say for me, most of the stuff that's been going on is learning. Um, you know, I haven't had the, the luxury of being down there. So it's learning, getting to know people. Um, and it's been very interesting. I will say, uh, a bill that's something that this council should definitely pay attention to is H4, which is an act relating to standards of care for egg-laying hens. And for those that know, are, those that know are just cringe. I will not be signing on to that bill.
Yes.
So I had a question, uh, maybe you guys could help out with some trespass law, um, talking about congregate housing. And I know that Hillary Cole- And I know that Hillary Cole with Berry Housing Authority talked about this last night. Her and I actually had a conversation about it and she had emailed me to see if we might be able to make some change where if someone no trespasses an individual from a property like Berry Housing at the Manor or Green Acres or any of those properties, they still then can go to the property if they're going to visit somebody. So if they're going there and selling drugs or maybe they assault somebody or who knows what, then they're no trespass from there. But if they're going to visit someone, then they're legally allowed to go there. So just trying to get the wheels spinning, Hillary is, you know, she's really concerned about this, as she should be because of the situations that are going on and without having the power to essentially tell these people, look, you can't be here, it's unsafe.
Yeah, I don't know constitutionally how that works with, because they are going to someone's house. I wouldn't want to speak to that. But I will say that if someone is doing inappropriate stuff and they're arrested in the building for doing so, the state's attorney do have the ability to put restrictions on individuals that are arrested. There was legislation to make it so that they have to, instead of may, it was shall. But the state's attorneys really fought back on that and wanted it as may, whereas probably it should be shall put restrictions on, because there should be restrictions on people that sell drugs and poison in our community, including people that are selling poison in our low-income housing next to children. I gotta be really careful.
Another layer of complexity, counsel, is that these are federal programs. So the state does have, you know, I don't disagree with any of the premise. It's, you know, people should feel safe. I mean, if you live at North Berry Manor, you should feel safe anywhere in North Berry Manor. And unfortunately, and we've seen, you know, we've seen similar news accounts in a building in Burlington that fortunately is getting much better. So I've been pulling those up and watching those and I actually want to reach out to them and say, well, what did you do that was most effective? And, you know, find out what they're doing. So, yeah, I mean, I heard what you heard last night and it's disturbing that people are trespassed because they're committing crimes within a building, but you also have to respect the fact that, okay, someone else lives in that building and they're inviting them in. So as long as they're going straight from the stairwell to that person's residence, they're okay. The problem is they're not. Or they're going straight to the residence, but then they're not going straight out. They're committing other crimes. So it's frustrating, it's complex, but like I said, I think the federal jurisdiction has a real layer of complexity. I mean, honestly, guys, I've always felt like if, I mean, I understand that HUD has certain classifications in terms of who is eligible, but I've never understood why you couldn't have a building within a community like Berry where we have, you know, four, why couldn't you have one that is simply, or two that are simply, look, these are designated for the elderly, for those, you know, for those folks. And these other two, you know, yes, those are sort of, those are mixed and we have a variety of residents there. I've never understood that, but every time I bring it up, I'm always told it's a federal issue.
Not directly answering your question, Counselor Deering, but I, in 2019, when I first got on the council, I tried to get flower beds installed at North Berry Manor so that the residents could go outside and do some gardening during the year. And that was a pain because of some of the federal rules around these things. So it is very, there's a lot of layers to jump through.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from anyone, actually?
So I just want to state that, you know, you've got two representatives that are down here fighting for Berry City and I'm sure you have any questions, you can always reach out to us.
I had, I had a lot of great conversations about the two of you at the Governor's inaugural celebration with other legislators. And I kept telling them, why am I so excited about the city of Berry sending two freshman representatives to the State House? They don't know any better. And it's great. Listen, I'm already hearing good things about both of you, about how, you know, every conversation turns back to Berry and I appreciate that. Obviously, with this $68 million influx in cash, I will be, you know, I am all over that. So Representative Wazak, you and I will be talking a lot during the session because I'm following that money trail.
And just to, for the benefit of the public and other folks, this is $68 million that Senator Welch secured in help for the state of Vermont in, directly for flood response. And while there, it's both very broad and there are a lot of steps for approval, one of those steps will be final legislative approval for whatever plan is put forward for that $68 million by the end of this legislative session. Because we have the money, but we have to get the plans through the feds. And so I met with Doug Farnham today to talk about the timeline for that, the uses of that money. And there are a bunch of very good ideas on how to either use that funding directly for Berry-related projects or use the money to supplant other state funds so that we can work even quicker. In other words, if we can, if we were planning to do X thing with state money, but this federal money will help pay for it, let's use this federal money and free up those state dollars because we can get those going much quicker than a federal project, too. And this is exactly why it helps to have a flood caucus and to have folks from impacted municipalities working to pull that bill together because it is truly nonpartisan and there are a lot of really good ideas from all over the state about how to use some of these dollars.
Perfect. Good work, gentlemen. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, counsel, word item, word item 8D on the agenda. Counselor Guston, would you mind giving us the flood resiliency plan update?
I would be very happy to. Thank you. And thank you, Manager, for calling up the presentation this evening. So tonight I'm presenting on 2.4, Funding Opportunities for Community Building. That section of the plan reads, Berry City currently lacks a staff position to direct recreation in the city and must rely on its community partners and active citizens to bring together opportunities for recreation and community connection. It should direct funding towards efforts in the form of small targeted grants. Next, thank you. Where did this come from? Why was this included in the flood plan? In the Berry Up forum, supported by the Vermont Council on Rural Development, in September and October of 2023, shortly after the first round of flooding, a number of people in those forums identified a desire for neighborhood-level connection, meeting their neighbors, doing projects together with them, building that kind of house-to-house, street-to-street camaraderie, and for the city to support that in a meaningful way. The argument of why this is related to flood resiliency is that deepening neighborhood-level connections builds social connectivity and provides greater community resiliency in difficult times. Knowing your neighbors, being able to reach out to your neighbors to borrow a tool in good times and to ask them to help you muck out your basements will make the city better as a whole and will directly better fit residents, both in the ways that they interact with the city and the ways that they live in the community. A lot of people in those forums expressed memories of the city being highly cohesive at the neighborhood level, either when they were growing up as children or as young adults. And with the demographic change, with the high population changes and the turnover in our housing in the recent years that we've had in this city, some of that neighborhood-level cohesion had broken down and we need to take active steps to bring it back. So next slide, please. So this is a proposal I'm specifically advancing. The ask is for $2,500 in the budget ask. I've spoken with the manager and there is an existing budget line related to city committees that the manager is planning on level funding forward into the FY '26 budget. So the ask would be for that level-funded line to remain the same and be directed towards this community grant program, which would be doled out in micro grants of up to $250 for community building activities. I envision this as a grant process developed by the Parks and Recreation Committee, which has recently reconstituted. Originally, when I started brainstorming this two and a half months ago, I was working with a single member of the Parks and Recreation Committee to bring that forward before one of their meetings. They had a series of sort of snafus around posting meetings and being able to get to their meetings, so they have not yet reviewed this in their meeting. What I had done in lieu of that is had individual conversations with members of the Parks and Recreation Committee just to give them a taste of the idea and say, I would love to talk about this in a future meeting. And they've all indicated they're amenable to talking about it in a future meeting. So the goal would be to place it on, for them to place it on their agenda at their next warned meeting, discuss this further, develop a process that they would then present to council for exactly how people would apply for this funding. And that going forward, they would screen applicants and make recommendations to council for funding that can be awarded starting in July of 2025. Next slide, please. Thank you. Some of the, and this is just pure brainstorming, but I would love if people can get creative, some of the possible ideas to use this funding for, a neighborhood yard sale, buying everyone the price stickers and the flyers around town, food for a block party that brings a couple of streets together, supplies for a neighborhood-specific greenup, a flood garden if someone's got a corner of their property or if there's a corner of city property that could benefit from being better planted and providing better water retention and better landscaping in that corner. If a couple of streets wanted to get together, a group of friends wanted to get together and host a broom ball tournament at the BOR and rent that space out and get some of the equipment and everything like that. Or if there is a neighbor in your neighborhood who needs just a little bit of extra help and 10 neighbors want to pitch in together to make the physical labor part of that happen, you know, I could envision a little bit of money going towards supplies to rebuild a porch or build someone a ramp or something like that. The goal would be that it would be generated by multiple members within a neighborhood and provide a way and a reason for people to connect with each other and build those social connectivity and build that cohesion. Next slide, please. So my ask for the fellow counselors tonight is a motion to refer the program to the Parks and Recreation Committee, to refer this idea to them so that in their next and upcoming meetings, they can have a full public discussion of the process, take input from other members of the community on what they might like to see in that grant process, what might be helpful, and that we pass the ball to them so that they could get this started and bring a process back to council. So, any questions?
Well, I'll accept that as a motion to refer the program to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. I guess to start off the discussion, Amanda, would the, so, you know, thinking through the goals, and I think this is great, I mean, I want to do it. Would like a high score be based on how many people you're connecting? I mean, overall, that's the goal?
Essentially.
What do you think? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that could absolutely be a great factor as part of the rubric, how many people you're connecting. You could ask for signatures from people on three adjoining streets, like 25 signatures from people on three adjoining streets. I think there's a lot of different ways it could go and I think that the Parks and Recreation Committee could develop that. The single core goal is to get to people within their own neighborhoods to connect. And whatever I think gets there is a great idea.
Yeah, I'm in. Any other questions, counsel?
Oh, yes.
So I guess my question is probably more about process, which hasn't been developed yet. When you think about a total budget of $2,500 and micro grants of up to $250, then you're only talking about 10 grand.
It's small.
And that's fine, but my curiosity is, you know, is this the sort of thing that it would be like a rolling thing? So, you know, we're going to do, you know, three a quarter, four in the spring, summer, and you know what I mean? Like, how will it, because someone might not have a great idea until, and rather than have, I'm thinking about process, if someone, if we just award them all, you know, in January, let's say, and someone has a, you know, grand idea in March, then it's, they have to wait until the next year. So just a curiosity for, I guess, the Parks and Rec to think about how they might spread that out to make sure everyone has access to it.
Yeah, I think that would be great for them to consider.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And you twist my arm, like, if they all get used up in the first month, I'll be back asking to double it next year.
And it could even be, you know, five in September, five in September, five in March.
Yeah.
So folks were planning, you know, because, let's face it, when it's, you know, 10 degrees out, it's harder for people to, you know, to gather larger groups of people. Mr. Anthony, did you have a comment, question? Yes, Mr. Anthony.
Oh, thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you. Just a reflection. Years ago, the city actually staffed each of the neighborhood playgrounds for particular recreation-based periods purposes in the, in the summer, oftentimes with high school folks. And it seems to me this would be a nice wedding of underutilized neighborhood playgrounds and at the same time, an attraction of volunteers to say, we have a grant for some equipment, some, um, uh...
Stuff.
If you will step forward and organize some kind of recreational activity, I would also remind everybody, I think you know this, that our high schoolers actually have a community service commitment, which they can execute in the summer. So it's a modernized version of what used to happen 30, 40 years ago, whereas the Recreation Board in the city department actually hired high school folks to run recreation programs all throughout the neighborhood playgrounds. This would revitalize, if you will, the lack of use of the playgrounds and also provide a sort of gathering point for the very neighborhood cohesion that Counselor Guston referred to. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, counsel? So we have a motion and a second. All those, I'm sorry, Amy?
Oh, that's okay. Just a quick thought, I really like the playground idea, too. The one in our neighborhood on Vine Street took a hit from the flood, so I love the, and I know some others did, too. So I like the idea of helping those out to keep with the flood theme. Maybe there could be something at those events, too, like almost like a requirement of this grant, not that you're going to count heads, but like, maybe you could help people sign up for regroup and beat the alert, like, at those sessions, like, have somebody who can help people, you know, if people bring their phones with them and maybe they're not aware of those, but have that be an outcome of those events, like, have them sign up, maybe have like a one-page flyer that everybody takes home and can stick with a magnet on their fridge or something of like, these are, you know, phone numbers to call or what to do or where to get flood information, that kind of thing. Just thought.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries unanimously. Counsel, we'll move on to item 8E on the agenda. This is the Public Safety Forum follow-up. And I guess I'll just start by thanking everyone who attended the public forum. I thought it was extremely well-attended. Thank you, Nicholas. It was extremely well-done. And Chief Vale and Washington County State's Attorney, Michelle Donnelly. You know, folks certainly had a lot to say, but if they had questions, folks went away with answers. So I really, personally, I enjoyed it and I think people, I think it was time and I look forward to the next one.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just do the quick version for anyone who wasn't there and this will be recorded so people can watch it again. But we, again, great forum and the real purpose of it was to hear from people. So we did very little speaking at the front end and really let the time be taken up by the residents who showed up. Just for the context, you know, we had talked about, this conversation started in the city council this fall, late summer and fall, and because we're experiencing and observing higher levels of criminal activity, as you can see the list here, just, they're really quality-of-life complaints, they're not, you know, very... They're, they're really quality of life complaints. They're not, you know, very, I want to keep emphasizing that overall Berry remains a very safe place. These are just. Nuisance crimes that, that we're observing. And, and again, this is, this is not a Berry issue. This is something that, not just the whole state, but I think. Across the country, I think there's, there's just been trends going up this way. This is just a sampling of headlines from other parts of the state. You know, Heinsburg, Burlington, St. Albans, our, our neighbors in Berry Town and Brattleboro, right? And, and a lot of communities grappling with this, a lot of communities struggling with the answers and the solutions. And so we're, we're not alone in this. This is not something that is happening just in Berry. This is, this is something our, our fellow municipalities are facing. Throughout the state of all sizes, I would say. The, the data, you know, I think it's important to know that, you know, people perceived increasing in those nuisance crimes, but that's not just a perception. It's, it's really a reality of the data. As you can see here, this is from our police department. The blue bars show the three year averages in terms of incidents in, in all these categories. For example, loitering, vagrancy and retail theft, you can, you can see the categories that are on the bottom. And as you can see, the gold bars show 2024 counts and everything is up. Just increases across the board, sometimes quite dramatically, for example, loitering and vagrancy and retail theft. We're also seeing a really concerning trend in the data in that we're, we're having, the, the police department is having. Much more frequent and repeated contact with the same individuals over and over again. And so this, this slide here shows that the individuals with the eight highest police contacts. Accounted for 367 contacts. So, so basically, just to simplify it. On any given day of the year, the police department likely dealt with one of these eight individuals. The blue bars on this chart are Berry City Police Department contacts, the gold bars are other agency contacts. So these are not just, again, this, this also highlights that this is not a Berry issue, right? You can see that the individuals that our police department is having frequent contacts with are often also having frequent contacts in neighboring police departments with the state police. Et cetera. You can, the, the line at the bottom shows the arrests, so there are some arrests associated with these individuals, but you can see. It's, it's, they're certainly not keeping up with the contacts and. One incident here, one particular subject in this data set, you can see that all of the Berry City Police contacts occurred since December 31st, 31st, 2024. The chief ran this data on January 10th. So in the 10 days that span between. December 31st and when the chief ran this data, that individual had seven contacts with our police department. And then really, you know, it's, it's all quite concerning, but the other piece of this is that only one of these individuals is currently, was currently lodged as of last night. I don't know if they're still currently lodged, but as of last night, they were still currently lodged. Everyone else was out of their own, on, on their own. This is, just to show that it's, it's not just police response that's being impacted, it's also EMS. Now, this, this data, I think somebody pointed out it. Not necessarily a direct one to one. It, it doesn't mean that, you know, this is, this is because of the crime, there's more EMS calls. It's probably more of a trend setter for the drug related events, right? But just to show that. The importance of this slide is just to show that it's, it's not just police. We're seeing increases in service calls across the fire department as well. In fact, this, this data is a 12, 12% increase from the same months, looking back at last year's data. The city response, you know, we, we, our goal when we started to figure out how to respond to this in the fall was sort of two planks. One was to both show empathy for those that need wraparound supports. But also recognize that we have an obligation to the approximately 8,000 other people who live here, who want to recreate, who want to be. Out on the streets without feeling threatened and being, you know, harassed or, you know, assaulted as some people have been. So that, that was the balance we tried to strike and, and we did so, you know, we, we did the overtime patrols, which I know were very, very popular. With our, certainly our downtown merchants. I heard from residents who stopped me on the street, very pleased to see them. They were not sustainable. You know, there's, we, we can't require those OT shifts be filled, we can only post them. And, and we're down, we were down five police officers most of the year. We've had some luck recently with recruitment, but. From a staffing perspective, it, it wasn't really sustainable as well. But when they were going on, they, they did show some, some promise and, and I think the public did. Enjoy it. We took some feedback last night about the public conduct ordinance. I won't get too into the details of this. But I, I think many of you know that Brattleboro earlier this last, or late last year passed, their select board passed a, an acceptable public conduct ordinance. It subsequently was overturned by a representative town meeting. You know, we, we, this is something that the chief and I, you know, we look at other communities to see what they're doing because we're not the only ones facing this. And this was something that seemed to be really compelling and interesting to consider for Berry. You know, this may not be the solution for us, but we thought it was, it's something that we've been following very closely. And we wanted to get, one of the things we wanted to ask people for feedback on, if they chose to, was, was an ordinance of this nature. Just very, very quickly, you know, this ordinance basically establishes behavioral no trespass zones that are sensitive areas. The, the example I keep using, just because I think it resonates with people is, one of the things it would do is that it would not permit people to. Aggressively panhandle within 50 feet of an ATM, right? And that's, that's to balance the constitutional right of the person to panhandle. With the constitutional right of the person to feel, you know, safe, secure when they do go get money. And they, you know, they, they've been in an enclosed space where someone knows they've got cash in their wallet and they may feel threatened. Rightfully so, if somebody approaches them for money. So that's, that's the example I use because it's, I think it resonates and explains. One of the reasons that this, this ordinance was considered. There's, you know, there's, there's different levels of behaviors and penalties associated with it. As I mentioned last night at the forum, you know, the chief and I don't expect this to be like, this is not a moneymaker. This is really a tool in the belt for police officers to, you know, move people along, right? So if you are, if you are doing that panhandling. Outside of the ATM at night and someone does call it in, this gives the officer who responds the ability to say, hey, this is not legal in Berry. Right? And, and so that's, I, I don't know if they would, you know, that the officer would follow their own procedure, whether they issue a fine or not. But really, the idea here is giving the officer the tool to direct someone to stop a behavior that is concerning to, to somebody. Rightfully so, right? Given the example of the ATM. So again, we, we got a lot of great feedback last night. A lot of people got up to speak. And then these are just some of my takeaways from the forum. You know, the mayor mentioned, I think it's a first step. I think it's, it's an ongoing issue. I think it was really important that the state's attorney was there, that our, many members of our delegation were there as well, legislative delegation. This is not something that Chief Vale or I or the council are gonna solve. This is something that's gonna have to be solved more globally. Not just because it's happening in other communities, but because our, our hands are sometimes tied and you heard that from the state's attorney as well. So again, first step in, in, in this process. I, I was really appreciative of the very practical suggestions that some residents made. In particular, lighting on merchants row and cameras, like those were some great practical ideas that we can start talking to Green Mountain Power about. And start exploring internally as well. And I think it's really important that, you know, the, the, the conversation and the feedback was really civil last night. But I think it's also important to acknowledge that. And, and somebody mentioned this and it really struck me when they did that it's, it's okay and it's appropriate and it's, it's possible. To both feel empathy for people who are going through these difficult moments and may end up in the situations where they do create these. Quality of life issue crimes and to feel threatened by them, right? Those are two things that are not. Diometrically opposed. They, they, you can feel both of them and it's okay to feel both of them. And so I think it's, that, that was an important takeaway, at least for me, in hearing the conversation last night. And then, you know, this, this is, if this was an easy topic to solve, somebody would have fixed it already. Somebody would have come up with the, the silver bullet. You know, this is, this is, this is a balance of two rights of two people, right? And, and I think these are the toughest challenges to solve in government, period. Right? So I, I think I, I heard last night also that the solution needs to include law enforcement, but it's not just law enforcement. There's a social service and wraparound service component to it too. And, you know, this is, you know, and, and the way I've been thinking about it, you know, this is, you know, we can think back to. The fact that now every time somebody goes on a plane, you get scanned and sometimes you take your shoes off and you can't take water, right? And that was a balance between, you know, how the world changed on September 11th. And, and, and we had to balance the safety versus the, you know, of, of, of the people, all the people going on the plane. Versus the, the perhaps invasion of privacy that somebody felt by taking off their shoes, right? And, and I think. Similar here, right? We have the, again, the ATM example is just easy to illustrate. The constitutional right of somebody to ask somebody else for money, but also the right of someone to not feel threatened. And that's, both of those things are okay and we just have to find the right balance. And so next steps, you know, the ordinance is certainly an option, you know, we spent some resources already with the city attorney. You know, I think it'd be helpful just to get even a straw poll of, of whether we should spend more resources to, to get something crafted that the council could consider. You know, I think there's obviously other approaches to consider. Some of them include advocacy for changes in state law. The wraparound services are, are important and then restorative justice as part of the, the interventions. Maybe even that could come as part of a, of an ordinance, right? That the, instead of a fine, there's a, there's a referral to the justice center. You know, and I, I just want to be very clear, we, we are not a social service agency at the city government, right? We, we do not have a department of social services. We do not have a department of homelessness services like New York City where I came from did. So those are not things that we can do as a city. Those are things that would need to happen outside of us. We can certainly be part of those conversations. But I just want to be very clear, I'm not suggesting that we, as the city, provide those wraparound services because we, we can't. We don't have those, those, those. Those, that expertise on staff. And then I'm, you know, certainly open to suggestions or feedback from the city council. But again, I thought, great evening, very happy that everyone, everyone, for everyone who turned out, I saw several of you in the audience. And like I said, looking forward to the, the next steps as we tackle this issue.
Counsel?
I was able to attend. I was really glad to see as many people online and in person and see as many people speak. About, you know, what's happening for them or their ideas about an ordinance. I personally am not in support of an ordinance for the simple fact that I feel like all of the. Research that I've done today, which is not a lot. But some quick searches indicates that ordinances aren't going to change the behavior. And so it feels like a waste of time to me and a waste of money. It feels like the, I understand, I'm not saying that we can't, we. Need to do something to address this, but I don't think spending money on an ordinance to have a police department who's already strapped. Now have to enforce an ordinance really seems like not the best use of our time and resources. And. I think it sounds like our high flyers, if you will, are maybe causing the biggest problems. And I don't think an ordinance is gonna fix that either, high flyers or not, because. I mean, the thing that kept coming back to me is the people who are aggressively panhandling. Don't care if they're gonna get a $200 fine. They don't care. They're, and what are they gonna do? Go out and panhandle to pay their $200 fine? I, I think we have to recognize that this is a much bigger issue and as much as we want to solve it. We don't have the magic wand and we're not gonna be able to do it in a really, you know, clean, neat, like wrap it up in a bow way. I think it's gonna take long sustained effort to address substance abuse, to address people who are unhoused and quite honestly, poverty. That's what we're dealing with here. People who are living in poverty and the trauma associated with living in poverty. So I think we, if we can address those three things with a magic wand, then I think we'll be all set. But I don't think that this ordinance is necessarily gonna fix it, so I'm not in support of necessarily spending more money on it.
I echo that. Yeah, the things that I read said a similar, similar thing, that it really isn't. The answer, and that's part of why Brattleboro pulled it, is that they found that it wasn't serving the need and the other needs were so great. That. There was, that's what they had to address, but the point remains, there's no answer, you know, or no easy one. And no financially solid one.
Personally, I don't like financial fines when you're poor, unpoor, and it sucks when you can't afford to pay that. So I, I understand and I empathize, but I also understand that our police officers have no teeth in order to move people along. So people that are doing these behaviors in places that people should feel safe, they shouldn't be there. So right now, we have no way to say, hey, you know what? You can't be here, you gotta move along. But this ordinance is a way for us to at least start. And yes, I think that there are some things that could be changed and should be changed and tweaked. To be more specific for us, and this is the start of the discussion. But without a way for our police officers to enforce something to allow our citizens to be safe. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the safety of the majority of people for a small minority of people. That are not really respecting anybody. So we have to kind of balance, like, we're talking about. The needs of the majority versus the needs of the minority. And I honestly feel like we need some teeth for our individuals to be able to, to do something with.
I mean, I'd like to see an ordinance. And for those who are getting all riled up, we're not debating this this evening. This is a poll of the council to see if they would like to see an ordinance for consideration. I, for one, would. Do I believe that this ordinance is going to solve the problem? Absolutely not. But it might solve it for one or two people and for those people who feel a little safer, for those people who feel a little more secure. For those people who follow the rules. And there are people who are engaging in panhandling, who will gladly follow the rules if there are rules. You know, this is not a, I mean, what I'm pursuing in this legislative session, these eight frequent flyers, I'm coming for you. I want felony charges. At a certain point, when you have, when you're burning up those kinds of city resources. And you're having, you know, 400 interactions with, with police officers. When you're the ones, like you just said, counselor, it's probably five individuals. If you speak to our officers and our chief, it's probably five individuals who are responsible for 90% of this aggressive. Panhandling issue. And so I'll absolutely be going after that. But like I said, I mean, personally, I'm not saying I could vote for or against such an ordinance, but I'd like to see one. And I don't think we're talking about an inordinate. I mean, there are other communities who have passed such an ordinance. And it has, it has survived challenges. So I'd like to see one. Counselor Guston, would you like to see one or not see one?
Um, I, I echo a lot of the concerns shared by Counselor Spalding and Counselor Sean Bell. I'm, I just. I, I personally struggle with this and I thought a lot of the points made at the Public Safety Forum with concerns about an ordinance were, were extremely well put. And I also heard, I, I was grateful to be there, was grateful for everyone who shared their experiences. And I also heard a lot of people who, who are feeling scared in their own community. I guess, I, I guess I'm landing on, it's tough to, it's tough to really have a real conversation about what this would entail without seeing something. And I would welcome direct feedback. I haven't, I had, I've only had one person, one constituent from Ward Two reach out directly to me. Would welcome a lot more direct feedback on this Ward Two specific. And while I'm not wild about, about the idea of it, for all of the reasons shared tonight, it is also tough to have a real conversation unless we actually see. What, something that's actually proposed instead of sort of theoretical stuff based on other communities.
So you'd like to see the, so you would like to see the ordinance presented for discussion? Unless I'm hearing you incorrectly.
No, I, I guess, so I, I. I'm, I'm struggling with this because I also, I think Counselor Spalding makes a good point about, about spending the money. I, I really, I really struggle with it and I also don't want to, to devote a lot of financial resources to something that, that still. Doesn't, doesn't feel like it will work for Berry City when we get to it, but I also don't know until we get to it. So I am, I'm trying to have it both ways. I, I guess I, I, I want to ask how much it would cost, but I know that there's no good answer to that. So yeah, I guess I would, I guess I would look at one, but still extremely wary.
I understand. Counselor Stockwell?
I would say, first of all, that since people are here and this is a public issue, we should allow people to speak. But my feelings about the, the, the proposed ordinance echo Counselor Spalding. But my feelings about the proposed ordinance echo Counselor Spalding's. If it's not effective, it doesn't matter that other people have done it. A lot of people have done things, but if they haven't effect, if they aren't effective, why should we do them? And if it's eight people, if we're doing an ordinance around eight people, this doesn't seem to me like the best problem-solving approach. I'd also like to see some more data on what is effective. You know, we don't really talk here about urban planning, and yet, having more light, having more lights and having more cameras and having less of a large, dark parking lot that directly comes off the stores would be something to really think about in terms of a preventive. And I think there are probably other preventives, but I think it should be a larger discussion in which we say, okay, here's what, here's some things we can do to make the city brighter and easier, and here's some things we can do to discourage folks who are aggressively panhandling. But to me, I have a lot of doubts about this ordinance, and if it is effective, then we should be able to have some data to say, this works. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so in answer to your question, unless I'm hearing, unless I'm hearing the counsel incorrectly, they would not like any further work done on this ordinance?
Yep.
Okay. Counsel, we'll move to item nine on the agenda. This is upcoming business.
Are we going to ignore all the, there were a lot of hands up?
Yep, I know that. I took a poll of the council. That's the question the manager asked. Could we poll, would the council like me to continue working on this ordinance? And the answer of the council was no. So, Counsel, we'll move to item nine, upcoming business. Yes?
I needed, I could have said this earlier, but when I asked about speaking to this issue earlier during the public comment, we decided that I wait now?
Yeah, and you did say?
And you'd allow me to make a comment?
Of course.
So may I do that now?
Of course you can.
Thank you.
This is on the Public Safety Forum?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
It seemed like the most appropriate time. I just wanted to thank you for the Public Safety Forum. I came away with having thought that the panhandling wasn't such a big deal, but I heard some people who were really scared and have had some incidents that were frightening to them. And one of the things you asked were solutions, and it was really busy and we timed out last night. So I've thought a little bit about it, and I just wanted to share, like you heard, the lighting and the cameras. In that ordinance, it also spoke to a few other things, and one of was about having people leave their belongings in different places. And I believe in Montpelier, they have lockers. And so I thought, can we look into having lockers for unhoused people? Because they, as a group of people, are stolen from more and assaulted more than any other demographic. And that doesn't get reported a lot, but the people who work with them know that this is what's happening for them and their lives. I don't know where we ended up with providing some porta-pots, having something like that so that they're not wanting to go into stores or offices. I know, having been at the library, that people come downstairs and those are public toilets, they're used frequently by people that seem to be probably are unhoused. I don't know, I don't ask them. We talked about food and shelter and maybe being able to coordinate those a little bit. I'm not sure where people can get food in the middle of the day if they don't have money for it. Transportation from the buses is seeming to go through some challenges, and I'm not sure, but people have appointments, doctor's appointments, support groups. Somebody asked me for a ride today, I took them up to the hospital for some tests because they told me the funding for them to have Gopher paid for has ended or has met its limit. So I told them to check with a Medicaid, I don't know what that is. So transportation for people is a really big deal and getting to where they need to be for their support groups and for help. I wanted to thank the People's Health and Wellness Clinic, which during their hours, people can make appointments and come in and have health care. You talked about why we thought, somebody asked about, why are there so many offenders living with a Berry City address? And you spoke about that we had had lower rents. We used to also have, is it on Keith Avenue? There was the old hotel. I remember going in there to deliver Meals on Wheels 40 years ago, and there were just lots of rooms where furloughed people were living. And I think that we need to work together again to hold the state accountable for the burden of support placed on communities like Berry City, who house and service the court and the associated services. And over the years, when I was on the board at Washington County Mental Health for eight years, we went to the State House over and over because the funding was annually cut for those services. And when the state decided to change from the state hospital and that type of institutionalized service, they made a promise that they would support communities. And we're not getting that support anymore. It's always chipped at, and they're being very creative, and I'll tell you, one of the creative things is on Wednesday nights, the first, second, and third Wednesdays from January through April, people can go to 23 Summer Street, which is owned by Washington County Mental Health, from 4:30 to 7 o'clock, and they can receive acupuncture from two licensed acupuncturists who use their ears. They can get Reiki, they can get relaxation, meditation.
Getting a little off the Public Safety Forum.
I'm putting this, this as being a part of the solutions, or these are creative solutions for how do we address these issues? So, sorry if that felt like it was too far out. I wanted to let, make sure that people know. And tell your constituents, it's free, it's open to the public, I go, I bring other people with me. So, and then the other big thing that we decided, and the Rotary, I think, had started it, is we used to have downtown walking. And we said that when communities have people out walking and being in the community, there's less of the kind of behaviors that we're seeing. And so can we get downtown walking started again? Small walking groups, people can sign up, they can do it informally. Maybe that's something that Rotary or one of our service organizations could wind up. So those are some ideas, and I really like the traffic calming, and I can't wait to see the people who go around revving their engines and threatening pedestrians with loud cars and trucks and making that an unsafe place to be too. So it's a different type of intimidation, and I think it's very physical and very real, and we're seeing too much of that road rage kind of driving as well. So thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I appreciated your words in closing last night and the way that you and the city manager really listened to what everybody had to say, and it was, I think it was a good discussion and we can keep having them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, did you have a comment on the Public Safety Forum follow-up?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out that, like, I feel like any discussion around this needs to be centered around the question of what specific behaviors an ordinance like this would ban that are not covered by existing law?
An ordinance, like, we're not talking about the ordinance, this is, we're talking about Public Safety Forum follow-up.
Yeah.
An ordinance is not going to be the poll of the council was that the ordinance wouldn't be brought forward to the council.
Yeah, but that was part of the topic of conversation, was it not?
Last night?
Yeah.
Well, it's moot at this point because the question that the manager asked was, would you like me to keep working on this ordinance and present it to the council? And the answer was no.
Okay, but we're talking, we're discussing the Public Safety Forum, correct?
Yes, the follow-up.
And that ordinance was brought up at the Public Safety Forum, was it not?
Yes, and it was brought up again this evening, and the point is moot because it's not coming before the council.
So that Public Safety ordinance as proposed is completely dead, and it won't be brought up in front of the council?
Unless the council changes its mind at some point in the future, and then it would be on the agenda, and then it would be open for discussion.
Okay. Well, relevant to that, I do think it's still worth bearing in mind, since it might come up again in the future, that it's worth thinking through what an ordinance like this, if it does get brought up again in the future, what specific behaviors it would prohibit that are not being prohibited already. That's all I wanted to say. That's all I wanted to bring up. I think it was an important point to bring up. You don't want to hear it for some reason, but that's your prerogative. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel, did you have a, did you have comments relative to the Public Safety Forum follow-up?
Yeah, I'm not sure I was correct about this because I was way in the back, but it appeared to me that the forum itself was somewhat dominated by the commercial community, the business community. They had a lot of concerns about the image of safety on Main Street, which I certainly understand. But I would like us to look more broadly about community safety and not just concentrate on the downtown, but think about community safety in the sense of, you know, the safer streets, for example, and traffic calming and taking care of our most needy residents. So rather, I think someone spoke to it last night, actually. It was the gentleman who identified himself as a former Marine. He talked about a more holistic approach to community safety, and I think that's a really good point, so that no matter when this topic comes up again, because it's not going away, that we, that we provide an opportunity for a broader approach to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we are at item nine, upcoming business. Is there anything that the, yes, Counsel Spalding?
I wonder if we could have a conversation at some point in the future about the process, protocol. I don't think policy might be a little bit pushing it, but something about the resignation and notification of city council members, because that was really messy, and I'm hoping we can clean that up if it happens again. Thank you.
You, so just the, so what happens when somebody resigns?
Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can do that. And you're right, it was embarrassingly messy, vicious. Anything else, Counsel? Okay, roundtable. Counsel Dearing, we'll start with you.
Us.
Counsel Sean Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Guston?
Pass.
Counsel Stockwell?
Pass, but I would like to know, but for future business, can we have a quarterly update from the police department about what's happening? What are the crime rates? Where are the crimes happening? And just have that on the council agenda every quarter? Is there some reason that can't happen?
No.
Thank you.
Counsel Spalding?
Nothing, thank you.
Just the governor's inaugural. First of all, it was an honor to welcome and introduce the governor and the first lady. But what was incredible about the event, and some of you were there, is how good the auditorium can look when you put a little bit of effort into it. It was, you know, walking in, it didn't even look like the same building. And it, it made me excited about the funds that we have through Senator Sanders and then the most recent grant that we got, and the future of that building, because I think that building, I think that entire complex has an incredible future. I mean, it just, I was at the governor's last inaugural gala, and our auditorium looked everybody's good as any facility in Chittenden County. It was, it was really, it was really incredible, and it was great to see so many people there. I mean, everyone from state government was there. It was great to see all of the secretaries reconnect with them and, you know, some of the commissioners, and just honored that the governor chose to have his inaugural ball in his hometown. So with that, Counsel, we do have an executive session needed. Would anyone, we'll need to, a motion for findings, and then we'll need a motion to actually go into executive session. Anything you'd like to offer, Counsel Dearing?
A second?
No, we have, would you like to, so I could read you the motion that I would like. So the motion would be to move to find that the premature general knowledge of the confidential attorney-client communications to be made during executive session will place the city council at a substantial disadvantage because it risks public disclosure of confidential legal advice regarding the requirements of Vermont's open meeting law and for responding to an alleged violation of the same. That would be the motion, so that is your motion, Counsel Dearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would anyone care to second that motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, who'd we get?
Sam.
Oh, okay, thank you. So Mel seconded that. Any discussion, Counsel? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, thank you very much. The motion is unanimous, so we do not need to roll call. And now we'll need to, need a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
We will be, thank you, we'll be inviting city's attorney to accompany us as well as the city manager. Was that your motion, Counselor?
Sure.
And you're second, Counsel Dearing? Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And folks who are watching, we will be coming out of executive session. I do expect the council to take a vote. I'm hoping maybe 30 minutes, and then we'll be back in open session, but if you hang out, like I said, I anticipate it might be about 30 minutes, but don't hold me to that. Thank you. Thank you.
You want the other one too?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Because your speaker is not working.
I can hear you guys. If you can hear me, I think we're okay.
Thank you.
Cast.
This meeting in progress.
Okay.
Okay, just checking to make sure. Councilors Stockwell, can you hear us? We good on audio? Thank you. Okay, counsel, I would entertain a motion to executive session.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor that the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Counsel, as you're aware, on, I believe, January 7th, the council received an alleged notice of violation relative to the open meeting law. With us to discuss that is a city attorney. David?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm David Rue from SPNF Attorneys, city attorneys for the city of Berry. And as the mayor said, on January 7th, the city received a written allegation of an open meeting law violation, setting forth two alleged violations. One relates to the alleged failure of the city to post the statutory open meeting law complaint procedure, as well as a process for how complaints may, under the open meeting law, may be filed with the city. The second was that the December 30th council meeting was not properly noticed because the agenda was titled "Regular Meeting," when regular meetings of the council are only held on Tuesday nights per charter, and the December 30th meeting was on a Monday night, so the agenda should have said it was a special meeting. Under the open meeting law, upon receipt of an alleged violation, the public body, the council in this case, has 10 calendar days to acknowledge the violation, either by saying that it happened and it intends to cure it, or say that no violation occurred. And then, within 14 calendar days after acknowledging a violation, the council has to take steps to cure the violation by either ratifying or declaring as void any action taken from a meeting that was not noticed, and by adopting specific measures that actually prevent future violations. Our recommendation to the city is that they're, both allegations are correct, and that there were two violations of the open meeting law. With respect to the first, as far as posting the open meeting law statute, the city did, in fact, have the text of 1 VSA Section 314 posted on its website, as required by Section 7 of Act 133. But what the city did not have on its website was an explanation for how to file a complaint of the open meeting law. So that's the first violation, and as required by the open meeting law, we recommend the city make a motion to admit that violation, and then adopt the procedure to cure that violation by ensuring that an explanation for how, for filing a complaint under the open meeting law is indeed posted on the website, and to ensure that information about the open meeting laws requirements, including an FAQ from VLCT, is distributed to all new council members, the city manager, and any committee or other chairs that are subject to the open meeting law requirements within the next week or so. That, in our view, if the city passes a motion along those lines, would resolve the first violation allegation. Would you like me to go on the second, or would you like to deal up the first right now?
Actually, you know what? I think what, I think what I'm going to do is entertain a motion to admit that the city did not completely comply with the requirements of Section 7 of Act 133, amending the open meeting law, in that while it posted the text of 1 VSA Section 314 on its website, it did not post an explanation for filing, for filing of a complaint, of a violation of the open meeting law, and to cure the same by posting such information, meaning the instructions for filing a complaint, on the city's website, and by distributing information about OML requirements, specifically VLCT, open meeting law FAQs, to all council members, the city manager, and any committee or other chairs subject to Vermont open meeting law requirements to be completed by, on or about January 21st, 2025. Is there anyone who wouldn't care to make that motion?
So moved.
Made by Counselor Guston, seconded by Counselor Deering. All those in favor, I'm sorry, is there any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor that the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion is unanimous, no roll is needed. Sorry, continue, David.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Night.